Are we ready? Okay, gonna begin. Hello, everyone. Good afternoon and welcome to the special call meeting of the Kattaw City Hall on Tuesday, May the 26th at 6:00 PM. Notice of this meeting has been sent out pursuant to the Kentucky Open Meetings Act. This meeting is being conducted by video teleconference. Before we begin, I'd like to go over some housekeeping items. First, this meeting is being livestreamed for the general public. Second, a reminder, in order for members to participate in the meeting, your video must be turned on. All members must be both seen and heard. Third, please note, any interruption of the video or audio will necessitate a suspension of the meeting until the broadcast can be restored. Fourth, when you are not the active speaker, make sure your microphone is muted, so background noise and feedback is limited. Fifth, if you need to speak, you can raise your hand on your monitor, or you can use the raise hand function. I've asked staff to help me monitor any requests to speak, so I do not miss anyone. Sixth, please note that after a proper motion is seconded, we may have more roll call votes than usual in order to correctly record votes and actions in the minutes. However, we will continue to try to use voice votes as appropriate. Finally, to make sure all council members are able to be seen on the livestream, I ask that all staff members or other presenting guests who are participating with us today to keep their video turned off as well as auto-audio muted unless they're presenting or otherwise speaking. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, if not, we'll get started with the roll call vote to record attendance. Savannah, would you call the roll, please?
Okay. Kim?
Here.
Sean?
Here.
Tom Simpson.
I'm here, I'm sorry.
Sandy?
Here.
And Skyla?
Here.
Did you hear me? Okay, so we have five out of six. We have established a quorum, so I will call the meeting to order. Remind you, the meeting is being videoed via Zoom and YouTube. Begin by having a prayer. Tom, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Dear Heavenly Father, we give for this day many abilities and talents that you've given us to allow us to earn a living and to have means and to not only provide for necessities but far above that. Lord, we thank you for this country, which will freedoms that we enjoy. We are thankful for all the blessings that you give us. Lord, we ask your special blessings on those who are suffering, especially those with our recent virus. We thank you, Lord, for those that have improved. We give thanks for the technologies that allow us to still meet. We ask that you would go with us through this meeting and that the decisions that we render be a betterment for our community. All these things, we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Tom. I'm gonna switch around a little bit and my mayor's report. I'm going to go ahead and go on with that. All right, let me first say how proud I am of the staff and the C employees of Kattaw. They've worked really hard to keep our city functioning from Western Kentucky to correct some conflicts during this time. So everyone has worked really hard. As far as office operations at City Hall are concerned, we're remaining closed at the present time. But when we get our protective partition installed and a few other details worked out, we will open with limited customers coming into the office. Please be patient with us as we work through this. As far as making your timely payments, we still offer automatic draft, pay by check, and we have a drop box with envelopes provided to drop off your payments without coming inside. Also, starting in July, we'll be offering a pay online with a credit card or a bank card. We want to make sure that we keep everyone as safe as possible without spreading this coronavirus. You can always call us in advance if you need to make an appointment, if you need to come in to talk to us in person. And as a reminder, we are starting a farmer's market presently June the 13th, if nothing changes. Thank you for your patience. Okay, we'll go on with our agenda. And the first item of business is the review of the minutes from March 2020 of City Council Meeting. Has the council had time to review the minutes? Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
I make a motion.
Second? Motion's been made in second?
Second.
Sean? It's seconded the mo- All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, the minutes have been accepted for the March 2020 meeting. The next item is the review of financial reports from March 2020. Has the council had time to review the financial reports? Is there a motion to accept financial reports from March 2020?
I make a motion to accept the financial statement for the last two months.
Doing April 2. All right, is there a second?
Second.
And Skyla, seconded the motion. All in favor, yea or nay?
Yea.
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 Motion's been made and seconded to accept the financial reports from March 2020 and April 2020. We will move on to the next item, old business and there is none. On new business, we have some resolutions, some municipal order, and a couple of first reading of ordinances. The first resolution is Resolution Number Five, which is a resolution approving authorizing the purchase of real property by the City of Kattaw. Jay, would you read the resolution, please? Or do you want me to do about?
City of Kattaw. And can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. City of Kattaw, Kentucky, Resolution Number Five. Resolution authorizing purchase of real property within the City of Kattaw, Kentucky. Map ID number 21A1-L-B-2, property address 80 Cedar Street, Kattaw, Lyon County, Kentucky. Whereas Charles Malin Guest is the current owner of approximately .226 acres of real property located within the City of Kattaw, Kentucky, which is more particularly described in Exhibit A, which is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference. And whereas Charles Malin Guest has offered to sell the above-described real property for the purchase price of $30,000, which is the appraised value of the above-described real property. And whereas the City of Kattaw, Kentucky desires to purchase the above-described real property from Charles Malin Guest for the purchase price of $30,000, deems that it would be in the best interest of the City of Kattaw and its citizens to purchase the above-described real property from Charles Malin Guest for the purchase price of $30,000. Now therefore be it resolved that the Kattaw City Council hereby authorizes the purchase of the above-described real property from Charles Malin Guest for the purchase price of $30,000 and authorizes the mayor of the City of Kattaw and the Kattaw City Clerk to execute any and all documentation necessary to effectuate a purchase of the above-described real property from Charles Malin Guest. Barbara Campbell, Mayor, City of Kattaw, Kentucky, attest. Savannah McLeod, City Clerk, City of Kattaw, Kentucky, introduced by the council, 2020, adopted by the council, blank, 2020. And I think there was, there may have been a meat bounds intended with this, but the meats and bounds legal description is for the real property at 80 Cedar Street, Kattaw, Lyon County, Kentucky.
Is there any discussion? Have put down 10% earnest money property. Well, add that. Do I hear a motion to accept the resolution?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Roll call? Yea or nay? Savannah, you want to take roll or? Can we see hands?
Okay, Sean?
Yea.
Any, can you verizon?
Yea.
Yea. Yea.
And Tom is a yea.
Skyla, yea.
Okay.
All in favor? Has been in favor. All right, it's unanimous. Okay, so that carries. Okay, we'll move on to Resolution Number Six. Resolution approving and authorizing the land water conservation grant. Jay, could you read the resolution, please?
City of Kattaw, Kentucky, Resolution Number Six. Land and Wander, Land and Water Conservation Fund 2020 Grant Application. Resolution, whereas the City of Kattaw proposes to develop recreational resources to provide for the health and well-being of the general public. And whereas the City of Kattaw intends to make application to the Department Local Government for assistance under the Land and Water Conservation Fund Act of 1965. And whereas Land and Water Conservation Fund is limited to funding of a project up to $250,000. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Kattaw hold and reserve 50% of the proposed project costs for the purpose of matching the land and water conservation fund assistance. And be it further resolved that in the event a grant is awarded, City of Kattaw understands that it will sign assurance to comply with all applicable federal and state law rules and regulations, especially Title Six of the Civil Rights Act and Section 504 of the 1973 Rehabilitation Act. Signed Barbara Campbell, Mayor, date, attest, notary public, date. My commission expires, sealed.
Thank you, Jay. Any discussion? On his motion to accept the resolution?
Make a motion to adopt the resolution? Second.
There a second? Oh, made and seconded. Roll call? Savannah? Do you want to do a roll call, Savannah?
Sean?
Yes, yea.
Kim?
Yea.
Skyla?
Yea.
Sandy?
Yea.
And Tom?
Yea.
I'll pass.
Okay, votes were in. Set everybody? So Resolution Number Six passes. On the next Resolution Number Seven, we are going to pass on that one at this time. It's authorizing recreational trails grant, program grant. So we will move on, we will possibly take it up at a future date. We'll move on to Resolution Number Eight, which is Resolution approving, authorizing assistance agreement between the City of Kattaw and the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority to provide it to $1,264,200 of loan funds for project number A20-022. Jay, could you read that resolution, please?
Yes. Resolution, a resolution approving and authorizing a resolution approving and authorizing an assistance agreement between the City of Kattaw, Kentucky and the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority to provide up to $1,264,200 of loan funds for project number A20-022. Whereas the City Council Governing Authority of the City of Kattaw, Kentucky, governmental agency, has previously determined that it is in the public interest to acquire and construct certain facilities and improvements, the project, to the governmental agency's wastewater system, the system. Whereas the governmental agency has made an application to the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority, the authority, for the purpose of providing monies for the project. And whereas in order to obtain such monies, the governmental agency is required to enter into an assistance agreement with the authority. Now therefore, it is resolved by the City of Kattaw, Kentucky as follows. Section One, that the governing authority hereby approves and authorizes the assistance agreement between the governmental agency and the authority regarding project number A20-022 substantially in the form on file with the governmental agency to provide the necessary financing to the governmental agency for the project. Section Two, that the mayor and city clerk of the governmental agency be and hereby are authorized, directed, and empowered to execute necessary documents or agreements and to otherwise act on behalf of the governmental agency to effect such financing. Section Three, that this resolution shall take effect at the earliest time provided by law, adopted on May 26, 2020, governmental agency, City of Kattaw, Kentucky, by mayor, attest, by city governmental agency.
Okay. Do we have any discussion for this resolution?
What, what is it specifically for? I mean, is it for a clarifier at the water plant? Or is it for all this sewer that we're, that's ongoing now? The two lift stations?
It's for the sewer that's on.
Okay.
It's for the lift station work that we are already on. It's this grant, or not grant, the loan that we have received through KIA. So it's just the final pieces of paperwork for that, so we can receive funding back.
Got you.
Okay, any further discussion? I hear a motion to accept the resolution?
Make a motion.
Make a motion to accept the resolution?
A second.
Motion made and seconded. A roll call, yea or nay? Savannah, you want to call wrong?
Sean?
Yea.
Kim?
Yea.
Skyla?
Yea.
Sandy?
Yea.
And Tom?
Yea.
I'll pass.
Unanimous. Set your numbers.
Yes, ma'am.
But it's Skyla. Do I? Motion. Motion has been accepted to, for the Resolution Number Eight. Ready to move on to the municipal order? We have a municipal order accepting the bid and approving a contract for clarifier project. Jay, would you read the municipal order, please?
Yes. City of Kattaw, Kentucky, Municipal Order Number, a municipal order accepting the bid of Bass Maintenance Corp. for the rehabilitation of the City of Kattaw Water Plant's upward flow clarifier and associated equipment, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. Be it ordered by the city, excuse me, be it ordered by the Kattaw City Council. Section One, that the City of Kattaw accepts the bid of Bass Maintenance Corp. for the rehabilitation of the City of Kattaw Water Plant's upward flow clarifier, excuse me, and associated equipment in the amount of $97,626, which bid is in substantial compliance with the bid specifications issued by the City of Kattaw on April, blank, 2020. Section Two, the mayor hereby authorized to execute a contract with Bass Maintenance Corp. for completion of the work as authorized in section one above. According to the specifications, bid proposal, and all contract documents here to fore-approved and incorporated in the bid. And then this should read Section Three, it says Section Four, but should read Section Three. This order will be in full force and effect from and after the date of its adoption. Barbara Campbell, Mayor, City of Kattaw, Kentucky, attest, Savannah McLeod, City Clerk, City of Kattaw, Kentucky, adopted and recorded by Savannah McLeod, City Clerk.
Okay, part of this was already budgeted for this year, and the remainder will be on the next year's fiscal year budget. Is that right, Savannah? $47,000 for next year?
Mm-hmm.
So this work's already been completed and just came in over budget?
No, whenever we made the budget for last year, we only budgeted in for $50,000. Then we got a closer look at it, and we had two people submit bids. This one was the cheapest one, and it was over $50,000. Much more work needed. So what I've done is, we've split it up to do the $50,000 that we've already budgeted for. And then in the proposed budget, I did the rest, the remainder of, since it's gonna fall in between two fiscal years, so figured we could balance it.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, this was the first reading? So this is the municipal order, so do we need to do a vote on that as well?
Yes, ma'am. It will be approved on this vote. There will be no second reading requirement.
Okay. I saw do, take a vote for the municipal order, accepting the bid. Call a roll, Savannah?
So Tom is missing.
We, we need to push pause until Tom can restore his feed. There he is.
Sorry, I had some technical difficulty there, yes.
Okay, so we're taking a vote on the municipal order.
Uh.
Sean?
Yea.
Kim?
Yea.
Skyla?
Yea.
Sandy?
Aye, yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
Okay, I'll pass.
Unanimous vote. Has made to accept the municipal order, accepting the bid and approving the contract for the clarifier project. Okay, the next item is the first reading of ordinance number 03-09-20-05, the Kattaw Investment Policy. This was an item that was on the agenda for March, but it has been rewritten, so we've put it back on the, or first, under the first reading. So do I hear a motion to hear the first reading?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Jay, would you read the ordinance, please?
Before we, before we do that, um, so we had a motion to have a first reading and a second to have a first reading, and this is just to introduce this. Do you want to take a vote on having the first reading?
Sure, Savannah? You call roll, please?
Sean?
For the first reading?
Yes, yea.
Kim?
Yea.
Skyla?
Yea.
Sandy?
Yea.
And Tom?
Yea.
All in favor to hear?
Savannah, before I read this, just as a housekeeping note, the, the actual agenda, we had this as ordinance number 0309-20-05. And on the actual draft of the ordinance, I had dash 06. Is this one numbered as 05 or 06?
It's five.
Okay, we'll make that change accordingly then and read it as five. And again, this is a first reading, and that is not a substantive change. But just for the record, we will- Just for the record, we will note that this is actually going to be city of Catawba, Kentucky ordinance number oh three dash oh nine dash twenty dash oh five. And the good news for everyone here and our friends listening to us on the worldwide web, I prepared a summary of this ordinance. And it reads, summary of city of Catawba, Kentucky ordinance number oh three dash zero nine dash two zero dash zero five. An ordinance establishing a new model investment policy for the city of Catawba. This ordinance repeals the previous model investment policies adopted slash implemented by the city of Catawba and adopts slash implements a new model investment policy for the city of Catawba, which will establish policies, objectives and standards for the investment of public funds held by the city of Catawba. The goal of this ordinance is to provide maximum security for the investment of public funds held by the city of Catawba while also meeting the daily cash flow demands of the city of Catawba. This ordinance best ultimate responsibility for the city of Catawba's investment program with designated city officials, specifically the mayor and the city clerk. Furthermore, this ordinance establishes permissible investment types and statutory guidelines for various permissible investment types set forth under Kentucky law. A copy of the entire ordinance may be obtained at Catawba City Hall. Jackie M. Matheny, Jr., an attorney licensed to practice law in Kentucky, certifies that he prepared the foregoing summary of ordinance number zero three dash zero nine dash twenty dash zero five. And that it is clearly informative of the meaning of the ordinance. Signed Jackie M. Matheny, Jr.
Hi, thank you, Jay. Any discussion on the ordinance? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is the first reading of ordinance number zero five dash twenty-six dash twenty dash zero six, which is the Catawba uh, budget for fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one. Do I hear a motion that we hear the reading?
I make a motion that we hear the first reading of the upcoming fiscal budget.
Second.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded here in the first reading. Jay, would you read the first reading, please?
Yes, ma'am. City of Catawba, Kentucky, ordinance number zero five dash two six, two six dash two zero dash zero six. An ordinance adopting an annual budget for fiscal year July one, two thousand twenty through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Whereas an annual budget proposal and message have been prepared and delivered to the legislative body. And whereas the legislative body has reviewed such budget proposal and modifications have been made accordingly. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of Catawba, Kentucky as follows. Section one, that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty and ending on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one is adopted and set forth herein. Resources available, general fund, six hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Fire department fund, one hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Street fund, twelve thousand, two hundred dollars. Park fund, one hundred sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Gas fund, three hundred eleven thousand, eleven dollars. Water slash sewer fund, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars. Appropriations, general fund, six hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Fire department fund, one hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Street fund, twelve thousand, two hundred dollars. Park fund, one hundred sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Gas fund, three hundred eleven thousand, eleven dollars. Water slash sewer fund, six hundred sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars. This ordinance shall become effective upon passage and publication. First reading, May twenty-six, two thousand twenty. Second reading, consideration, passage, publication. Attest Savannah McLeod, city clerk, city of Catawba, Kentucky, Barbara Campbell, mayor, city of Catawba, Kentucky.
Is there any discussion on the first reading of the budget?
What increase or decrease is this over last year's budget, Savannah?
We certainly see, I don't have that number in front of me exactly. I'm sorry, uh, didn't do that, but I do know that in different spots, we are going to receive less, something like our municipal road aid. Um, that's coming at a thousand dollars cheaper than last year, or not cheaper, but less. Um, I know that our water and wastewater will be better. We're getting more money, more income for that one. Our gas department, it being so warm, we will see a decrease in that. But overall, I'm sorry, I don't have that number in front of me.
That's okay. Would it be fair to say that this budget does not substantially increase the various departments?
Yeah.
And that's based solely upon the revenue anticipated?
That's correct.
Okay. If nothing further, do I hear a motion to accept the first reading?
I make a motion to accept the first reading of the budget for two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-one.
A second, Beth.
Okay, we don't need a vote on that, correct?
Well, you can take a vote. Yeah, technically speaking, you don't have to have a motion to approve the first reading. Um, you can take a vote to approve the first reading, but you technically don't have to. What matters is after the second reading, we do passage through a motion, second and a vote.
Okay, thank you.
But if you want to, want to take a vote on it, you absolutely can.
Okay, well, we will just move on to the council members' reports. Does anyone have anything to report, the council members? Anything you want to discuss?
I do not, other than it looks like the list station and sewer projects are progressing very well.
Yes, they'll begin on another section this week, is that Savannah or next week?
Uh, yes, we will move in on our, um, manhole rehab now, this week.
All right, anyone else?
I'd like to, um, thank Art and Tino and Art's friend Mac and Wanda Skilern and my husband for helping us put up the decorations in the kettle for Memorial Day, and that will be held over probably until the Fourth of July.
Yes, thank you all very much. It's very, very pretty, very memorial, so we appreciate that very much.
Thanks.
Yep, you got. Okay, if there isn't anything further, is there, I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, I hear a second.
A second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn the meeting. They, I call the meeting adjourned, and we thank you very much. Thanks for your patience.